Do you say or call indoor consideration for improvements? Second, honey, any further discussion? In favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Period unanimous, four and zero. Hey Bill, how's it going?
Pardon?
How's it going?
Well, I'm still under the law of power.
Something you're here you want to bring up for?
Not a thing, no, I'm just finding out what you guys are talking about.
That's good, we always like to have young folks come and watch and listen to us to see what's going on for the city.
Right.
I need your help, could you come up here a minute? I'm not gonna try and buy a tractor from you, so it's not gonna be a John Deere tractor from when you had the implant.
What you got in mind, Doc?
Here we go. Now look for your bifocals. And then out here. We're gonna do a proclamation, Bill.
You are, you're gonna run me out of town?
We're gonna keep you in town. Here's what it says. Whereas William Bill Lamley has reached a milestone of a hundred years young in his life, which isn't till next Monday, so you're a long ways away. Whereas Bill served the United States Military during World War Two, past commander of the Elingsburg Zettle Veterans of Foreign Wars post nineteen fourteen. Bill is a connoisseur of fine Scotch and is a glass half-full type of guy. Would you affirm to that?
I agree with that issue.
And whereas an entrepreneur in the community has a distinction of trading horses for tractors, and a deal and dealer of the first television sold in St. James, and the brand was...
Admiral.
Okay. Whereas Bill stays young by whittling, hunting, and bowling. Anything else you wanna add to that? Not right now?
I have no other vices.
Therefore, I Gary Stern, Mayor of St. James, have the privilege to declare and decree Monday, April twenty first, next Monday, as William Bill Lamley Day in St. James, Minnesota, in recognition for your service to our nation and you reaching a milestone in your life. It is indeed a privilege, Bill.
Well, I certainly...
You wanna take your coat off, Grandpa?
Pardon?
Take your coat off. Then I'd have to stay awhile.
That's the plan. You guys wanna meet a picture? Jack one? Gonna be a picture?
Yeah, I go for it.
Think your coat off.
Say, say please, Mom.
Yeah.
You knew about this, didn't you? You knew about this, didn't you? You pulled a trick on me.
Preach, you did that?
I, I did nothing.
Boy, for you, I got it in.
Before you take the picture, I want you to know that in spirit, as a former mayor, Lauren Hurley from the public is right here with us spiritually, just remember that, okay?
Very good.
There we go. Make sure you smile, Bill.
One, two, three.
You were licking your lips, Jackie.
Let's get one more.
Okay.
Why did I put my teeth in?
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
Beautiful. Thank you, thanks very much. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you, Gary.
That includes you, Mommy.
Were you surprised?
Oh, man, oh, man.
Okay. Present items, your consideration, any questions? Nani, Josh, any further discussion rates? Well, we just got the bid for the jet rod or the jet back up at Burnsville. Two thousand two? Two thousand two. And new, they were how much? Three, four, between three hundred and forty and three hundred and eighty thousand. I guess this was seventy-five thousand, almost two dollars. We're good, okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried unanimous. License and permits, St. James Youth Baseball, on sale, malt liquor.
This is a request of the Youth Baseball Association. Your license, on sale. They are now taking over the baseball diamond, they're just on the high school. High school district. We're asking that council approve this, subject to the amendment of the city code which authorizes or allows associations to sell beer, which will be thirteen C and business that will get to red rate. And that new soda, it would not be issued until after the second, after the first meeting in May and published.
You guys okay with that? First meeting in May, anything you wanna add, Dave or Gary, any one?
No, I don't, we, we're not, you know, we, the high school still plays at the field, we won't sell it during the school season, it would be, there would only be sold during the summer. Seems like the amateur games and the summer games had it held it.
Can you add?
Nope, that's...
So I'm all. So just a regular. Paul and Josh, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried unanimous, so after first meeting in May, you're good to go. As soon as this passes the proper O.C. Okay, new business, quotes for Laura Hartman, Diffin Spin Doctor here. Sounds a little funny, but...
Spin doctor is actually a valve exerciser.
Are we all invited to where you're going, Bill, now afterward? At the club?
We, we can't, went there before. That's how we got in here.
Have a good day.
The spin doctor is actually, well, this is a valve exerciser. The one that we have now is practically, well, it's probably older than mine.
Old as that?
It's basically gone out. Uh, right now, we turn valves by heat. Uh, for safety issues, and in the coming years, the structure, infrastructure that we're gonna be installing, we need a lot of valve exercising. Some of our old valves do not turn easy. I went out, got quotes, the spin doctor is basically the only one that will meet our criteria. I got two bids from two different companies. Ferguson at sixteen thousand eight sixty-six, and Construction Products at nineteen thousand five hundred. They're identical same machine. So I'm asking to go forward with the purchase of the spin doctor from Ferguson, also with the knowledge that in the future, we'll be buying what is called a valve lubrication kit. Valve lubrication kit will take the valve that is stuck and basically free it up.
You are going to include that as part of this package?
Uh, don't have the bids that's up right now. I haven't gotten them back, I've asked for them, and they're only about two hundred pounds.
So this is what, it has a motor on it?
Okay, it is, it is a electrical, uh, it's a sixteen horse motor on a trailer. It has a actuating arm that if we go into the middle of an intersection, we can reach the whole intersection. One guy can operate this. It's pneumatic, so it's hydraulic powered. It's, uh, will take safety precautions for us, that we don't have to be moving our wrenches around, we don't have to be carrying them on the ice. Uh, it's a lot of safety features that it's, and we're looking forward on getting older, and so are the other guys. Um, a lot easier to operate, turn, I mean, some of those valves, it's got sixty turns on them. It takes a long time, if we got a water break, we wanna get it done in a hurry. This will aid in our speed up of it.
So you manually open each one of those, the graces?
Yeah, we do it right now, man.
Two, it takes two employees?
It takes two employees now, and sometimes they have a hard time doing. So with that lubrication kit, we're hoping that we'll, we wanna get into a valve exercising program. This will meet that criteria for all of that. If, I think, when Mark Searns was here, he did mention something in our report, and the report, we should look at something like this. So that's why I brought it forward.
Is this, is this a budget ready? Yes. What are we about to be for? Twenty thousand.
Yeah.
Little bit sixteen eight sixty-six, so we're here. Three, one hundred and thirty-four bucks.
You want to go with the low end?
Paul and Josh, any further discussion? Anything you have, Mike?
No.
Paul, just to get it.
Uh, it'll approximately be about a month and a half, depending upon the availability. Um, that's what I sold last, it'll be about a month and a half.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried unanimous, thanks, Mark.
Thanks.
Did we ever get that machine that was gonna help to pipe?
Keep the water?
Yeah.
No, that has not come in. Um, when we first ordered it, they first said it'd be a month, then they told us a month and a half, and they haven't answered our last couple of phone calls. So I definitely believe that they are still out of them, and they probably shipped them to the greater needs, so...
How many people do we still have that?
As of today, all houses that were frozen thought of. So they're all running.
Proposees from the neighbors?
Proposees from the neighbors are gone, everything is back to normal.
Is it, is it the same in Butterfield, you have knowledge of that, because there were several few places over there?
I do not have knowledge of Butterfield. I know I've talked to a couple other towns. Not Butterfield, but those, those guys are, they're supplying help gradually too. And one town, their watering, thought of. So, we didn't have that.
Luckily. Pretty good, thanks, Mark. Thirteen B, ordinance regulating outdoor premises for sales, this is the second reading. Nani? Josh, any further discussion? So is it going, passing a publication still?
On publication.
All in favor signify by showing hands? Posed, ordinance passes four zero unanimous, and it's effective upon publication. Okay, thirteen C, ordinance amending St. James City Code, section five point two, regulations required, first reading.
What's been added is the very last line of the code, which organizations exempt under USC section five oh one C three. What this does is allow nonprofit organizations to be issued your licenses within the city.
There's also two readings, so tonight be the first reading, next, council meeting is made, this second reading.
So I'm all.
Paul? Mike? Disagree? Any further discussion? All in favor signify by showing hands? Posed, first reading passes four zero unanimous, we'll have second reading in May. Six to eight, one of the meetings, and it'll be second, and of course, six after that. Thirteen D, shelter housing, electric, so, thanks, Steve. Thank you.
Everyone's got the copy of the shelter putting steel on?
Yes.
Um, we've got two bidders for putting the roof on, and that was Holton Builders and Kenny Carlson. We're recommending Kenny Carlson, because if you look at the Holton bid, if you can interpret that, you are better people than I am, myself and Bill. We recommend that because Holton Builders does not meet the specs. That is correct.
Do you agree with us?
You just said, need more?
I needed way more information than...
And that was basically it?
Yes, and it was asked for in the court.
Okay.
The electrical work to put new outside lights on the soffit of the south shelter, we have four bidders. And Dwight Keel offered an alternate bid at twelve hundred dollars, and after looking at his alternate bid, there's a picture of it in that literature. It is a flush mount LED that we will be able to put on the soffit, and it's pretty much vandal proof. Rather than going with wall packs, and our staff recommended we go with the twelve hundred dollars.
Yeah, did you ask for an alternate bid?
I did not ask for an alternate bid, this is just something we put in.
Steve? Well, yeah, that's the issue. God was didn't have an opportunity to get that. The alternate bid wasn't part of, part of the specs, it was.
It was not. It was just something he... I can go back and get...
I think you gotta go back and get it.
Okay, that's fine.
Sorry.
So, so would the motion be rejected, Bill?
Payable.
Payable, okay. Mike and Nani, any further discussion?
Just, just on the way.
It's probably...
Just for the electric. It's just a table they're working for.
I probably want this information back, that you so know and have access to this.
Everybody? Who is this?
Well, unfortunately, it's already been stated publicly.
But they want us to know.
Shouldn't, yes, it is the last.
Oh, I missed that, sorry.
Yes. Based on Steve's recommendation, their motion to table the electric portion. Nani and Mike, any further discussion? Anything you might add to that before the, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Posed, motion carried, it's tabled for two weeks. Now we're back to Kenny Carlson, Holton Builders, or Steve, are you okay with this?
Yes.
Anything you wanna add to that?
Oh.
Okay, councilor, this, Mike and Nani, any further discussion? All in favor of approving Kenny Carlson Construction bid at twelve thousand four hundred fifty dollars? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Posed, motion carried four u, four zero unanimous?
Thank you.
Good, thank you. And thanks for the help on the jet back as well. Okay, thirteen E, surplus property street department.
It is declaring the current jet back as excess property, so we can proceed with our disposal through auction process.
What kind of value does this get possible, right?
Right.
Right, what kind of possible value this is have?
Uh, the one bidder that offered, one dealer offered us fifteen thousand dollars for it. So I'm, I'm gonna talk with your remodel and maybe offer it to some surrounding community, if, you know, it might make something for them for a short time.
You think it'd be an actual number?
I think it's pretty, I think it's pretty close. It could come down from there, could go up from there, I don't know.
Very good, okay, fair enough. Thanks, Nani. Josh, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by showing hands? Posed, motion passes four zero unanimous, thirteen F, time people get fireball.
This is for replacing the sidewalk area between the new fire hall, tradition, first building and the current building.
The east side.
On the east side, it's area, pretty rough shape. And the reason we're bringing it to you now is because, see, GCC is giving us significant break on the price of concrete, and BK is willing to do the work right away.
So the low quote is BKC?
You said for sidewalk?
There's a si, there's, between the two buildings right now, there is a sidewalk. Now that's forty, forty feet by twelve foot and a hundred feet by twenty-one foot. That's a big sidewalk. Well, it's also in that entire area, because part of it, right now, is blacktop, it would be all concrete.
It's in front of that new, the new building back there, that's in between the three, three businesses. Okay, and I also know if you've got a rebar in there. I would suggest they use epoxy coated rebar.
Was that in this?
You gotta say, that personal experience with not having epoxy coated rebar, rust and blows up.
Steve, will you?
Was it in steps?
Now, I would suggest that who got the bid, it would be the same. Now, it might not be the same, but it depends on where they buy it and that too. But I would strongly suggest it.
Well, if you want to bid to, even as a contractor, we'd like to include, I'm sure.
These bids are like seventy bucks apart, so it's... But I'm, I'm just...
Yep.
Should I? Would I be able to, what's it called? Epoxy. Epoxy coated.
So doesn't that have to go back now?
No, you can add it as an add-on.
Okay.
Change order.
Okay, so then, then we would agree to accept low quote with the, with the...
Change order.
The change order of epoxy coated rebar. Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, motion by Mike is your second.
Second.
Any further discussion? That would be BKC Construction. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Posed, motion carried unanimous. Um, Paul? Joe? We had coffee area yesterday. Forty-nine people resident, uh, present. Signify by this one. A little less than that. Not four point nine, Mike. The street department does a good job of trimming trees and clean up on the north side of town. Town both sides now open Mondays, Wednesdays, and Saturdays. Monday and Wednesday, four P.M. to seven P.M., Saturdays, eight to twelve, and Wednesdays at five. Repatching of the holes created by the watering breaks will be done this spring. Is this state, state plan? Yeah, plan is in place by the state of Minnesota, they asked about if they could help bonfires and stuff up. April twenty-third will be amended dot, we'll be hosting a mini roundabout demonstration at Runge Trucking from two thirty P.M. to three thirty P.M. You have a, uh, Mr. Ray that was sent out, and we will be putting something somewhere? Like a big access channel window? Or that, and that's to, they wanna display what it'll look like if they put one here. You remember, council passed a resolution a couple months ago, saying we do not want either mini roundabout, but they still want us to look at it, and the ultimate decision will be amended dot when it comes forward to two thousand sixteen. Thanks to the staff and council for working with the lost pockets and the same property, they can expand the business, have the outside business that they're gonna have at the patio doors, something for that. Two thousand, the pro projects for this year, next year, and two thousand sixteen were reviewed, the county will... I had to bet twenty-six thousand. Six seven, this office, two thousand fifteen, hundred fifty-five? And two thousand sixteen is, uh, state having four, and this year is eleven street. It's grown street up by every acreage. EK is cities up working on hazardous waste material, a former performance planning plant. Cities worrying, willing to work on with any business for request for spec building, that was brought up, what we're doing to try and replace some businesses, and I'll give you a quarter on that. City staff applying for a grant from the state this fall to remove the Ohio Hospital building. We were turned down on that, Ali. There were seven applications, and they awarded two, and we were number three. They did invite us to re-apply, when is that?
Uh, yes, I believe.
August, okay.
This summer.
Okay, and the, and the grant would be for next spring or this fall?
Um, I believe we would be awarded, we would find out sometime this fall, depending on what the weather's like, I'm sure.
Okay, very good. Special as hell of waste management, in regard to citywide cleanup, no dates are set, has been set, we do, we do not have any plan for two thousand and four game for this year. Uh, in our new contract with waste management, we are allowed two events, which is two cleanups at a reduced cost in the five-year contract period. Uh, we're legalizing? So what happened next? I have to be rekindling, let me see, Nani? Don and Paul, uh, next Monday? Monday, Monday at twelve o'clock at City Hall to finish up the board of equipment. If you know what's that? Thank you for the, the...
Um, I almost said, use a caution tape on the computer up there. Brady wanted to have that. Saying very well, I've addressed that. The, uh, when the ice came out, it took the north end of the dock, snapped the pole off, and we're going to be, I don't know, when the weather quit, when the wind quits blowing long enough for us to get out there, we are going to be pulling that fifteen-foot section of the pier off.
What about the rest of it?
It should all come down, but we're trying to find ways to fund to build a new one, where...
Well, yeah, let's say you can kinda have a floating pier like you have in the other spots.
Our biggest, Mike, our biggest problem is removing the pilings that are driven. And we've looked, we've been looking into a couple of different ways of removing them. We'll see how these, the end ones come out when we hook onto them. Everything is pretty rotten in these things, it's just not in good shape.
So, so your, your hope is for, your plan is for just a fifteen-foot shorter dock for the two thousand fourteen season?
That is correct.
If you, if, when, say, if, when we redo it, is there any way that that dock would be, uh, lower or not?
If it's a floater, it'll be lower.
Otherwise, it would not be?
Well, we can make it any height we want it, if we're going to drive pilings and set it, we can make it any height we want. This is the height that was set when they put the poles in and laying the big timbers across.
We had some concerns and questions that it would be better if it was not quite as high as it is. Okay.
On a floating dock, I should be...
Great, anything else?
No.
Mark?
Uh, just to inform you that starting tomorrow, we'll be fixing our twenty-fifth water break. Also, like, what's that? Right in front of your apartment, Gary, on Fifth Avenue.
So that thought that was one that we got a notice today for no water tomorrow.
Yep. Uh, also, as I said, the, the water services have all thawed out. I tested the water yesterday, it's showing anywhere from forty to forty-two degrees. So I believe it's safe today, it's the last day that for letting your water run, that you get any kind of credit. So basically, just letting everybody know that it's fifteenth of April, and everything should, should be safe.
And they should shut it off.
Yes. And the last week of May, and the first week of, or the last week of April, the first week of May, we'll be flushing fire hydrants on the north and south side of town. So on Sunday, April, the first Sunday of April, we'll start at like midnight.
May, you mean?
Huh? In May, yes. First Sunday of May, we'll be flushing, we'll start at midnight, so we can get the downtown area done when there's no traffic. So, just to let you know.
Thank you. Adam, don't shake your head when you get this, a little more maturity than Dave's kind of getting mixed up.
The experience, Adam.
I got nothing.
They didn't see you shake your head on the camera. Anything else, Mark?
No, that's it.
Thank you for your help. Adam? You ready for the camera, Mark?
No.
Linda?
On this, on Tuesday, April twenty-second, we're having a luncheon here for the hanging basket benefit from eleven to one at the community building, uh, deliveries are available, you call the community building at forty-three seventy, where we preened potato soup and hot chicken sandwiches. Free will donation, okay? And then the theater this weekend will be held over the Rio Two, we will have another matinee on Saturday, April eighteenth, oops, nineteenth. The movie is eighteen to twenty-one, and then, and then Saturday at ten o'clock, we'll have another matinee.
Yes. Hanging Basket Free Will Evolution, April twenty-second, eleven to one, what do you serve?
Creamy potato soup and hot chicken sandwiches.
Very good, thank you.
Everybody call in, and we'll send well, not everybody, some got, some.
Thank you, Linda.
You're welcome.
Molly? What should do, Jurn?
Paul.
Josh, Nani, and Mike, and Paul, first, second, third, and fourth, thanks, Adam, for attending, have a good night.